Mike, we thank you. We've got a full complement here. So. I'm. Good. I didn't select to leave meeting. Okay, I want to welcome everyone to the January 10th meeting of the Ashford Planning and Zoning Commission, January 10, 2022. Welcome. We have a full complement of our regular members, so we don't have a need to sit alternates. Doug and Luther, obviously, you are welcome to participate in discussion, however, just not voting on any matters today. Valerie, are you good to go?
Yes, yes, I am.
Thank you very much. I'll remind everyone to please state your name when you do speak to make it easier for Valerie to capture what's being said in the minutes. And again, should you make a motion or anything along those lines, please state your name clearly so Valerie can capture that. All right. So you also have to excuse me. I had a printing problem today. My printer and my computer aren't working together very well, so I'll be being as nimble as I can on the computer to call up my agenda and other items here. So and since we don't have John on, I just want to confirm is John Caloris on? Okay, that's what I thought. So we can dispense with his introduction. Luther introduced himself at our November meeting as a new member and we'll move on. Review and approval of the November 8th minutes, November 8, 2021, our last regular scheduled meeting. Does anyone have any corrections or changes or wish to make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
That was Jerry DeFray with the first motion, and I'm sorry, who seconded?
Alex.
Alex seconded. All those in favor? Those opposed? Abstentions?
Jeff, this is Dick. Abstention is I was telling Alex I was in the hospital instead of here.
Yes, welcome back, Dick. Hope you're doing okay.
Well, done better.
Oh, okay. Well, I'm glad you're with us now. Thank you. And again, anyone else following Richard's lead, if anyone else was not at that meeting or actually attended it Zoom form, you would have to abstain, but I think we had a pretty full compliment that day. Okay, so. Motion passes, moving on to a public comment. I don't think we have anyone from the general public out here. I'll even open up to members of the board. If there's anything you wish to comment on. Okay, moving on to bills. We had one presented for the Chronicle for my guess it's for the hearing announcements that were out there for, I'm sorry, is it 7:04? And those were. Thank you, Michael. Okay, and correspondence. One of the items for the fifth item correspondence was the Office of Policy and Management Land Use Agency Training Guidelines. And Michael provided us with those. I'm hoping everyone had an opportunity to review. I still on here? Or did I get lost?
I see you all right.
They're here.
Huh. Where did I go here? That's not it. Having problems here.
We can see.
There you all are. I see you now. Thank you. Okay, so. Yeah, the just as a quick overview and Michael, obviously, you're more familiar with this. The requirements for this do not actually kick in. They are effective for 1/23, January 1st of 23, requiring any members of the board prior to that time to have their training done by the end of that year prior to January 1st of 2024. It's four hours of training that's required. I'm thinking that it would be a good precedent for us to start in on this training. A number of us have not had training over the last few years. We did have Ken Slater come in probably about three to four years ago now and gave us an overview of meeting procedure, holding a meeting, what it means to be a land use commissioner, that type of thing. And with the requirements coming down for land use commissioners and most of us having six-year terms that are regular members and two-year terms that are alternates, it would probably be a good thing for us to start in on our training. I've also been in contact with the Selectmen's Office regarding training in general for boards themselves. So we're going to have some discussion and I'll be speaking with Bill Fletti about what that means and what we've done in the past, especially with the fact that we do have required training as Planning and Zoning Commission members now. So the four hours that are required have at least one hour under requirements of the Affordable Housing Process and Fair Market Prices, Fair Market Activity. Then there's also a recommendation of one to one and a half hours in process and procedures such as planning and running a public meeting. And Commissioner Conduct, that type of thing. There's also a recommendation for at least one hour of being able to becoming familiar with site plans, surveys, maps, and agricultural convention. And the last optional item, which has a number of different areas in it, obviously, is one to one and a half hours in environmental, agricultural, and historic resources. So there is some options in there. There's some things that you can become much more effective in. You could be much more educated in as long as we have documented it and we send it on to the Board of Selectment, so they can then send that into the state so that we are registered. Again, our requirements are not to the 20 till 2023, but I think starting this in 2022, hitting the ground running will be it'll behoove the board itself and make us a better board that way. And I'm hoping to any type of comment on that.
Yeah, this is Dick Williams, Jeff. See, really, two approaches, but a lot of this is going to be dependent upon what is being done publicly. There had been a training that was offered through Plan Use and Planning Group or something to that effect. We had that. I know it was on the docket a couple of years ago and recommended that some of the new members go to that. But that's a one-day affair that covers most all the things that are talked about in this training. And I think it was held at one of the like a place like NICOG in the past. That would be one option if that's going to be offered in the, you know, the era of COVID. Another would be to try to hold something similar to what was done previously by having some, our attorney come in and offer the training like we did at the Senior Center three or four years ago. That might be the easiest way to get most of us if that's available. I know there are meetings that are taking place in the Senior Senate out, so that's would be an option. But that would be an easy place to to do things. And I would recommend that over trying to piggyback on something that would be public at this point.
Thank you, Dick. Any other comment?
Go ahead. A question. Michael, would you have any recommendations? You're a lot more involved in the professional development side of zoning regulations and compliance. Would you have any recommendations as to resources that are available either through a regional council of government or a consultant that could be brought in, something of that nature?
There's a, there's a lot of resources online that are free and that you can go on and look at, but that requires someone to want to spend the time on Saturday morning or after work to go through that on their own. The Center for Land Use Education and Research, which is part of the Yukon Extension Center, has a bunch of stuff. But you know, it really depends on what the commission's looking for. There's a side of training which is related to making you feel more equipped to make good decisions and understanding what you're looking at and your role. And then there's another side of training which is related to making sure that we make legal decisions and we conduct our meetings correctly per, you know, Robert's Rules or parliamentary procedure and et cetera. So kind of depends on what you're looking for, but there's stuff out there.
And if I may just add to that, Michael and I did talk briefly before this about what would be the best mode. Also, he mentioned that our current law group, Halloran and Sage, again, who Ken Slater is part of, has programs and actually canned presentations that they've been working with and developing. And actually, I've had a number of requests from not just, well, we haven't requested of them yet, but of other towns that they service for providing this type of training. And what we talked about was the possibility of if they go Zoom by Zoom methods, I mean, trying to piggyback into maybe what's already there, if the curriculum is what we're looking for. Otherwise, you know, sitting down with Ken and his peers for providing and giving them what it is we're looking for. And again, that might be a decision to work with the Selectmen's Office and any of the other departments that are looking to have some type of training, again, whether it is running a meeting or for our purposes, more of a, what it means to be a land use commissioner and the responsibilities involved there. So we do have a number of options. And again, even the, and I would be interested, Michael, if maybe with the minutes or something, you could share those with Valerie, what the provide the links or the web locations for CLEAR and all that, if it's something that you can provide. And again, CLEAR was exactly what Michael had said, which I'm going to try and remember is the Center for Land. Help me.
Center for Land Use Education and Research.
So they used to do. Yes, CLEAR.
They used to do trainings online. With COVID, they've put a lot of their more beginner type things, all the PowerPoints and stuff are online.
So I would be interested in having that available to anyone who wants to have a Saturday morning or after, late after work or whatever time, because I'd be interested in following up on that. But so I'm guessing that the commission is in favor of more training rather than less training at this point. And what again we'll do, we'll work with the Selectmen's Office to find out what is it something that we should just go out on our own and do, or is it something that they'd be interested in working with our current attorneys group, Howaran Sage, and having that provided to a number of departments in town? And the thing that Dick had mentioned, the training that takes place is usually in the spring. It's like March, middle March to early April. Last time I knew it was either Wesleyan or Trinity. They have it kind of centralized in the state. And it's a good program. It's another good program that if anyone wanted to, once we get the material on that, if it is a in-person, again, comes springtime, I have no idea what the status will be. Maybe they'll make it in person. Maybe it'll be Zoom. Either way, we'll provide the commission with the agenda and itinerary for that meeting. If it's something they want to attend, we'll cover the cost on that for training. Also, again, more training rather than less. Be very interested.
Yeah, Jeff, I attended that twice. And if it were offered in person, to, one of the advantages of that was a good chance to network and to have, you know, face-to-face interactions with other people in other towns and with the lawyers that presented on that. That was extremely helpful. I think I attended it the first year I was on the commission. And then I attended again a couple of years after that. But in the area of COVID, whether something like that's going to take place, a Zoom meeting doesn't quite accomplish the same thing as an in-person. If that type of thing is not available, I would option to try to do something where we have our attorney put together a program, either canned or what he's already doing. And there have been meetings at the Senior Center in recent months. And I think, you know, hopefully, within a couple of months, that could happen again. And I think having people around the table to ask questions helps a lot more than simply having a Zoom meeting.
No, absolutely. If we can't bring it, if we can't bring them here, we can bring them to you with Zoom, whatever it takes. But again, I'd rather get the information out there. But yes, I'd be very interested. Obviously, in person is a better way to go if we can. Luther, you had a question?
Yeah, this is going to sound really, well, it's just going to sound stupid after all that, but I was about to say that for my two cents, if there is an option for virtual, I will, I will always be more. It will always be easier for me to join virtually, that schedules being what they are, life being what it is, risk averse natures being what they are. It's very easy for me to join a Zoom meeting and feel like I get something out of it. I'm quite comfortable learning remotely. So if any of these things have hybrid options, I'll certainly take advantage of the remote.
Absolutely. And we'll work to do that too, so it's comfortable in their training. Yes, Janet?
I'd like to say, maybe you could take time to look at the, the CLEAR link that it's in the, the information that Mike sent us. And it looks like they have a couple of courses that are free. You know, they're online. People could do them at their own time and then maybe we could set aside some time at a future meeting to discuss, discuss it.
Yes, and that, that's a great point, Janet, that if someone does attend a session, obviously, whether we pay for it or it's free or whatever, sharing the information from that session to the other members who either haven't attended yet or aren't able to attend or whatever would be greatly appreciated. I'm not looking for everyone to be a teacher or professor or everything, but again, sharing anything of interest, anything that you would be pertinent, that your fellow commissioners would benefit from, would be a great thing to do. So keeping that in mind, too. It's not just for you. It's for the betterment of the entire board. Okay, so along those lines, we'll have more discussion on that. And we'll get some information out after, again, I've spoken with Bill Fletti to see what the status is, if he gives us any input, any direction. And we'll move from there as to going forward with this. We'll also be in touch with, maybe Mike and I can schedule something. We'll sit down with, whether it's Ken Slater or Duncan or whoever's leading their training department and seeing what we can take place and maybe again, what we can take advantage of that's already in the can with them. Any other comment on training?
Yeah, this is Mark Schnobel. Jeff, I just had a quick question on that, the Yukon Land Use Academy. You know, the videos that Janet referred to that are available. I don't see that there's, if you watch the videos, it doesn't look like there's any confirmation whether you actually did or didn't. You know, it seems to be the honor system when it comes to the resources that are available on that site.
I hope it's honorable. I hope people exercise honor on that.
But I mean, I do a lot of online training. And generally speaking, the training that I do at the end of it, you know, they, they send you a certificate that you actually were there and attended even the on-demand training. And it doesn't look like that's how the Land Use Academy is set up.
Thank you.
Register, you just watch.
Right. And don't, don't get a little certificate indicating that you.
So I guess that's my question. Is that, is that what the board is looking for is, is a certificate at the end or is this the honor system?
I think in using the CLEAR items, those free items that are available to us online that have shown some benefit or are recommended to us, those are honor system. Those are for your own benefit. Those are for, again, making yourself a more well-rounded commissioner. When it comes to some of the other for certification, I think we need to, I think we, it would behoove us to have something in hand for a certification, again, whether it's through our own legal group or whether it's through the Land Use Academy, that, that spring session or anything else that's developed. Even CCM has courses also, the I'm sorry, Cities Commission on Cities and Municipalities has programs also that have certifications to them too. So we'll look at all the different options that are available and come up with what we need to have to meet those four hours, starting, especially for next year, but for this year, to get ourselves used to it and get an understanding.
Jeff, I'm, I don't participate in that since I've kind of let my insurance license lapse, but in order to maintain a insurance license with the state, it required a certain amount of hours of training. And those training had to be, as Mark had indicated, they had to be certified hours. So they were witnessed. They weren't just like an optional thing. And reading the way this statute is worded, it sounds like this is going to be something that would have to be documented. It's not something that would be just, oh, we did it and trust us, you know? I don't think that's going to work.
Well, I didn't, I didn't say it was going to be a trust us or anything like this. I'm just saying that there are classes that are available that, as Mark pointed out, don't have a certification, but can bring us some, bring knowledge to an individual member should they choose to pursue. Should they choose to pursue it? I'll get that out. That was easy. But yes, we do need to probably have certified training that we can turn into the selection and then turn it into the OPM as required when that situation comes about, whatever their requirements are, whether it's forms or whatever data they need from us. So yes, I agree that it should be a certified education, but it doesn't mean that all education needs to be certified. It's just the education requirements that we, that we are turning in. Okay, anything else on the education at this point? Okay. Unfinished business. Um, review and discussion of the, of presentation of plan of affordable housing. This is something we discussed in our last meeting in November, hoping we were going to have more discussion maybe in December for January, but obviously, we're at January and we're not able to have that meeting. Michael, you had said that you have a presentation that, something that we could maybe at our next regular meeting, invite commission members of other departments. I have put together a short list of potential invitees to this, and it doesn't have to be their whole commission. It can just be a representative of their commission, but I was looking at the Housing Authority under Dennis Poitras. What was interesting in their last what's the word? I'm looking at their last broadcast in the Citizen, the Conservation Commission had a section on affordable housing and what that meant locally too. So I'd be interested in inviting the group under Loretta Robel for the Conservation Commission. Board of Finance, obviously, a representative for their group that can come back and talk about potential costs and involvement. Representative for the Board of Selectment, should they choose to attend. I was also looking at maybe the Commission on Aging also, having a member from there attend. Did anyone else think of a group that we could invite that would be that would benefit from seeing the presentation regarding affordable housing? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to steal everyone's thunder. That's okay. Um. Uh, Michael is, now, that's something that would you prefer to present that to the commission beforehand and we do it in March, or is it something that we could probably potentially do for February or a special meeting in February?
I think probably what might make the most sense is for the February meeting for the Planning and Zoning Commission to review, I can put together a proposed plan outline, which basically shows what, basically shows our process. And then if the commission can agree on the overall scope of the project, we can have a presentation in March at the meeting, which will essentially be like a project kickoff where we can do an overview on the topic, introduce the plan, what the commission's going to do. And then we can take the feedback from that meeting and those who show to to include in the public survey, which is typically part of the plan process.
Okay.
So that's kind of how we've done it in other places. But we can do it however.
You, you actually have some template that you've put together or have some template in process for, as you said, it could be
probably done.
Four pages, it could be 40 pages, depending on the size of the town and what's included.
Yeah, we probably have either finished or in progress or about to start 10 plans for 10 different towns. So we, you know, we like to do, we'd like to start with, here's the components. We all agree on this is what the project will include. And then once we all agree on the path, we do a sort of a kickoff and kind of introduce the topic, talk about the components of the plan, the process, and then try to get any comments. So we have an idea of how to tailor it.
Yeah, this Dick Williams. Mike, we had discussed funding your group to develop this plan. Was that funded and approved?
So the town obtained the grant from the Department of Housing. I suspect still have to go through the bid process. I don't know that, I don't know what the procurement procedures are for Ashford and how that would work, the amount of money. You know, there's no match, so it's all coming right from the Department of Housing grant, but I have to go over that, I guess, with Bill unless Jeff wants to, you know, how that's going to happen.
When I have, when I have my meeting or my discussion with Bill on the other training, I can bring that up to him, Michael.
Okay.
We'll see where you go from there.
In the meantime, does it, do you want me to move forward with the suggested outline of sort of the plan, process and components?
Yes, yes, I think that'd be a good thing. I'm looking at the dates here too. So if our first, if our meeting in February would be the 14th, which would be the second Monday, late that month. We could potentially have a special meeting the week of the 21st to the 25th, just trying to find a proper date for that. Does that sound right? I'm trying to not leave us too little time for any of the survey and things we have to do, because that would leave us March, April, May, and part of June before we have to have this completed.
Yeah, I mean, the way we like typically to do it is, you know, at that meeting, whether it be end of February or March, we kind of explain the topic. And at the end, we, we basically say, and you know, we're going to be launching a survey, right? So that way their people are there. And if we do a recording or whatever, you know, we don't, provided this, you know, assuming this commission is going to be the one at the helm, provided we are focused, that's not really that constrained of a timeline. Because this is not going to be a 40 or 50-page document, because it's a very short duration plan. It's five years. So the demographics are fairly structured. So if we open the, the survey in March, close it in April, at the April meeting, we can present. close it in April, at the April meeting, we can present the survey results and the demographics, because those are very standard, right, that's, here's what we have. Um, you know, I, we can certainly do it, um, if, but, you know, it's up to you guys how you wanna deal with that or have a special.
Well, what, what, what we could do, I thi- I think we could, I'd like to maybe have a special meeting and just to keep things moving with that, uh, give it a sense of urgency, but we could move it back to like that week of the twenty-eighth or something. Um, and again, we'd have to look to see what the schedule are, so we're not running on top of everything, I just wanna see. I know it's not a selectman meeting day, because that's usually the, um, first and third Monday. Um, does anyone on the commission have a, um, conflict with February twenty-eighth?
The Conservation Commission usually meets that Monday, but we're a small group, we could probably change it.
And you're invited to the meeting, so.
I'm invited to the meeting, right?
Anything else for the, uh, commission or knowledge of any other conflicts? Okay, let's, uh, let's tentatively go for the twenty-eighth, Michael. Uh, well, again, that would be, that, yeah, that would be the special meeting, whereas, um, again, you're gonna present and discuss with the commission, the presentation on the fourteenth, and then from that point, the twenty-eighth, we try and do the, uh, meeting with the group, and we can put this announcement out, you know, right, uh, sometime later this week, so we give plenty of time for attendance.
So the public meeting would be, or the, the, you know, the, the public board meeting you're thinking would be February twenty-eighth?
Right. The special, the special meeting that, uh, would be for the presentation.
All right, I will, tomorrow when I'm at Town Hall, I'll look to see if there's any other conflicts with boards or, you know, and check my schedule and I'll, I'll circle back with you to confirm.
Great, great, any other feedback from the members on this?
No, that's good.
Okay. Thank you very much, thank you, Michael. Uh, new business, new business involves, let's see, first is three thirty-five Ferentz Road, and this is the receipt of a, uh, application, uh, Michael, you wanna bring us up to speed a little bit?
Yeah, so, um, this is for a special permit under the new Lake District regs. It came in, you know, after we prepared everything, you know, so we're showing this here's receipt because the received date is today, but, um, essentially, I'll be scheduling the public hearing and you'll get all the application materials for the February meeting, so he's gotta do his butter's mailing, and, uh, I've gotta do my legal notices and everything, so this will be before you in February for consideration and discussion. But because I had the, because I had the time to at least put it on the agenda, I just wanted to put it on your radar.
Okay.
Mike, could you give a thumbnail of what it is?
Because the Lake District regulations were, um, the way they were adopted, if an, uh, a structure or a lot is in excess of ten percent and wants to increase, they have to come before you for a special permit to show the coverage and how they're gonna deal with the runoff for the new pro- portion of the project or the new, the new project, this is a, an application for that.
Yeah, what are they building?
Um, I believe it's a small addition off the side of their house. But I'll leave that up to him to explain in February.
Okay. All right, uh, so, um, we have something to look forward to for February. Could I have a motion to receive the application?
Motion to accept.
Motion to receive. Okay, that was Jerry, that was Jerry with the motion and Jeff Schillinger for the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? So moved. Okay. Moving right along to, uh, review of the bylaws, which Alex was able to send a scan copy of those to most everyone. Um, and, uh, we'll make sure that, uh, we provide, obviously gotten copies for that, uh, and what I just wanted to reference were two sections in the bylaws that, uh, I think we need to amend to have it read properly. Um, so, let me, uh,
Jeff, I can just say also, I, I certainly didn't get any, uh, communication regarding bylaws at all, so I don't know if I'm the only outlier or if there are other people that are lacking misinformation.
Jeff, I sent them to you because you said you want to review before we send them out.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I was, I was reviewing my own copy when I got yours, so I didn't realize you hadn't sent them out. Okay, so let me do this, let me share my screen. Can you let me share my screen, Michael?
All set.
Thank you. And where are we, where are we, that's not it, Ashford. Okay, that's not it, that was from Michael, that was from Alex. Let's try it again. Where did I put these? That wasn't it? I thought. No. Hmm, there's a Zoom meeting. Well, let me do this, then. Let me get to it here, hold on. And this is page two. Okay. It's there. All right, so we'll share. We'll go here. And I think it's page two. Okay, um, Luther, we'll make sure that we get these out to you so you can do a full review, um, but a couple of items that I found here um, were, are under Article Six, Election of Officers. Whereas in Section One, uh, we say at the next regularly monthly meeting following the biennial municipal elections, commission officer positions will be nominated and elected by commission members, which we did do in November. A minimum of nine regular alternate members must be present for elections to take place. Uh, if nine seated members not available, blah, 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 blah. But then in Section Two, we say.
Hey Jeff, I think, um, we're seeing the wrong screen, we're just seeing an email from Alex with the attachments.
Oh, it didn't open up, okay, let me go back here. Thank you for speaking up, instead of me boring you guys.
Jeff, this is Doug, I haven't received the copy of this either, so I think the whole commission probably needs a copy.
Yeah, well, Alex, I, I made that mistake from Alex where he had sent them just to me, I thought he had sent them out to everyone, so.
Okay.
No. Okay. So. Down here. How about now, what are we seeing?
No.
Nothing good, huh?
Your email still.
Are you working on two monitors?
No, I'm not, I couldn't, I'm not that smart.
You, make sure you, you click either screen versus window, um, maybe stop share, open it up and then hit the share again. Or you can forward it to me and I'm happy to do it.
Well, let's see what we got here, share screen, I put up an inbox. There's page three. So why aren't I seeing?
You probably wanna flag like the Adobe application to share, there you go.
Okay, so you can see it now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, the problem is this is the wrong page, oh, let's try this up here, I do this. Okay, whoops.
Yeah.
Oh, wrong one, so it's gotta be this one. What's this one? There we go.
Page two.
That's what we're looking for. All right, you can see Article Six, Election of Officers, correct?
Yep.
Okay, thank you, sorry about that. Okay, so I gave you the long spiel of number one, where we elect our, uh, off, our commission officers at the biennial, uh, elect, following the biennial election, first meeting thereafter. However, in Section Two, we say, a candidate receiving a majority of the vote of the commission shall be declared elected and shall serve for one year until the successor is elected. That should probably be two years or until the next biennial election, um, or successor is elected. Thoughts?
Yes. Well, I should say, until the, until the meeting af- after the next.
The same line, the same language as in one, the biennial, the, the regular monthly meeting following the biennial municipal election.
Right.
To be, to be fair though, we're okay because this is an or statement. So by saying that it shall serve for one year or until a successor is elected, it doesn't mean that at the end of that one-year term, that person suddenly is no longer the officer, so it's cut, you know, it, it, it doesn't fall into alignment with the biennial elections, however, it's an independent statement from Section One, basically, so Section One stipulates the interval that we must uh, elect officers, but Section Two just says that they serve for a minimum of one year or until a successor is elected. So if after one year we don't take action, they continue to serve.
Until that biennial election has in Section.
Until Section One is triggered again, that's how I'm reading it.
No, that's good, that's fine, I appreciate the interpretation, that's great. Um, so if we're good with that, if we're good with that interpretation, we can let that stand. Okay, no change there, so the other item that I saw was under Article Seven, um, for meetings, and this just has to do with what we do now, um, again, it's no great shakes if we're not in, uh, compliance with our bylaws, I would just like to be that way. We say regular meetings will be held on the second Monday of each month, which is pretty standard, um, pretty installed, except it falls on a legal holiday, which will be held on the second Tuesday. Um, however, in this day and age of, uh, Zoom virtual meetings and, uh, flexibility, uh, should we gain flexibility by removing the seven PM and the room one oh four Ashford Town Office Building?
Yes.
And I'm thinking we put in something to the effect of time and place to be determined, um, and I'm trying to think of some language after that.
So this is Luther, uh, what about language to the effect that, uh, shall be how, held at a location to be noticed in the meeting notice that is issued pursuant to regulatory compliance?
Time and place to be just determined as per meeting notice.
Or agenda.
Well, uh, meeting notice has, i- is the meeting notice independent of the agenda?
Not unless there's a public hearing, so we, but it's always on the agenda.
Okay, as, as per the post, as per the warned agenda.
Yeah, th- this is Dick, uh, Haven's just gone through submitting similar stuff to Sherry. So the EDC, we've left the language in that we've left there, you know, in, in, in the past. Uh, we're not gonna be on COVID Zoom meetings forever, uh, and then eventually, you know, you can always have a special meeting that supersedes what is, uh, shown as the, you know, Tuesday at seven PM, room one oh four, et cetera, uh, but that's what is goes into the ordinance, it's gonna be there for, uh, you know, five years, ten years, uh, you know, hopefully we're not doing this Zoom meeting and COVID stuff five years from now. So this, this should stand like it stands, you know, like it would be five years from now.
This is, this is Janet.
Go ahead, Janet, I'm sorry.
Sorry, this is Janet, um, I was just gonna say, um, th- there's no guarantee that we're always going to be in room one oh four either, sometimes there's other stuff going on there. Um, so I, I think not having it so specific is a good idea.
This is Luther, I completely agree with Janet.
Go ahead.
I completely agree with Janet, and that's what I was gonna say, Janet, is that, um, this seems exceedingly specific and that I think for, for bylaw purposes, I'm surprised it's this specific and that it should simply be that they, meeting will be held as noticed in the official meeting notice.
The only thing that I would add here is that our meetings, special meetings and regular meetings are based on what is filed in the schedule of meetings at the beginning of the year, so nobody's reviewing the bylaws to determine where the meeting is, so, so based on this, the schedule, the meeting schedule that's filed every year, that's how we determine regular meetings, special meeting, change of venue, et cetera. So, you know, I, I don't know that it's necessary to really include anything beyond referencing the agenda since it's all coming out of that schedule of meetings.
Yeah, okay, so it'll be held on the second Tuesday as, and place and time as indicated on the posted agenda.
I would say filed agenda.
Filed agenda, thank you. Okay, in order to, those are the two items that I had on these, and again, we'll get them, it out to you, but, um, just to close this section of our discussion, um, in order to make a change, we need a, uh, in this case, we have nine, so we need the two-thirds, we need a six-member majority for, uh, making the change. So, um, I'd like to get a, uh, motion for the change we're looking for to the bylaws, which would be, um, motion for Article Seven, Meetings, Section One, to remove the specific time and location for the regular scheduled meetings and replacing it with, um, uh, time and place to be determined as filed, as per filed agenda.
This is Janet, I'll make the motion.
Thank you, thank you, Janet, do we have a sec, and Valerie, were you able to capture that? Valerie?
Valerie, you're muted.
Okay, yes, yes, I've got that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
Okay, do I have a second on that motion? And I think I'm going to need to see everybody. Come on, expand here. Why aren't we expanding, okay, um, so, uh, I'll just go through quickly, Nord.
Hi.
Hi. Mark.
Hi.
Hi, Alex.
Hi.
Janet.
Aye.
Dick.
Okay.
Hi, Jerry.
Hi.
Catherine.
Yeah.
And Jeff.
Hi.
Yeah, okay, so it's unanimous, uh, thank you very much, we'll make that change and then, um, I'll get Uh, I'll get that change made and we will get all copies out to the members. Okay, I'm gonna stop sharing. Get back to seeing everybody. And the last thing under the new business, whoops, let's get rid of that. There we go. Um, was the uh. Commission discussion, uh, well, we kind of discussed this already under our training options and on the training guidelines, so I think we've dealt with A as per. Five correspondence, A OPM land use guidelines. Um, the last thing I have is for members to reminding members that you can pick up fresh printed copies. Of the zoning regulations that Michael has prepared for us, um, so that everyone has a fresh copy to start off the year. Uh, those of you with notes, additions stuck in and such, um, will now have uh. The fully printed copies, and Michael, I haven't picked mine up, are these copies that look and smell like the um. Uh, codification, or is it just simply more along the lines of what we're used to seeing?
No, this is, this is the co- completely codified document, so it's the new format. And, you know, the, the online version is, is far more um. User friendly than just a PDF, because everything is linked, you can search terms, you can export sections and. But yeah, just uh, you can stop in when the town hall is open, there, there are a new set, we've got binders for everybody of the subdivision regs and the zoning regs. If you aren't available, when the town hall is open, you can just let us know and we can leave, leave it outside, so you can just swing by when the building is closed and grab it. So just let us know whatever works.
Okay. All right, now we're on to zoning officers report, Michael, do you have anything?
Where do we pick these up?
The land use office.
Land use office, okay.
Thank you for clarifying that, Nord, appreciate it. Michael, anything for zoning officer report?
Um. Not that I can think of, um, we've, there's a, just fell right out of my head, another property which we're able to get some compliance on. Been basically orienting the first selectment to kind of explain what processes we have and kind of what, what we've been doing in the office. Working with Katie on getting the documents in our files organized and scanned, the ultimate goal is trying to connect those to make them available digitally, so that. When people are trying to make these, you know, make projects happen or do research on things, we have their property files digitized, so we've been working on. Getting a lot of that up to snuff, um, and, and meeting with some folks on some project ideas that they have.
You've been combining, you've been cleaning up and combining files too with, uh, instead of having uh. Uh, a, a file for a property for wetlands and a file for a property for zoning, you've been combining those, correct?
Yeah, so all the property files are combined now, so when you ask for a property file, you'll get a folder and it's going to have. A land use folder and a building folder within it, so that you can see everything rather than having things of, you know, in multiple places, we're now trying. We've created a unified filing system on, in our server and we're scanning everything so that we'll have everything digitized. And um, I've talked with the towns, um, uh, assessor, uh, assessors vendor basically, and. Trying to link that so that when you pull up a property card, um, you'll have a hyperlink to us, a PDF of all the documents. So we've, I did this in Wellington, pre-COVID, to kind of get all of our systems online at, because town hall shut down. So we're kind of working in that direction, because we're finding that a lot of people like to be able to do the research when it's comfortable for them and, and. Really aren't available when town halls open, because they are also working, so we're trying to make the information more available.
Okay, excellent, great, great progress. You and, you and Katie did a great job with that, thank you.
Mostly Katie.
I'll tell her you said so. Okay, that's uh, coming to the end of the meeting, um, uh. And again, I appreciate everyone's attention, it's good to see everyone again, um, and uh, expect to have uh. The two meetings in February, the uh fourteenth for a regular meeting and then the twenty eighth, hopefully that will meet. Uh, meeting requirements as Michael checks on that for any uh conflicts and uh, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Jeff, one quick item, uh. Where do we stand with love?
Uh, that's not an agenda item right now, so it's nothing we can discuss on this, if you want to, if you want an update, we can add it to the uh. Uh, agenda for next month.
Okay, there, there is, okay, everyone.
Motion to adjourn. Jerry Dupre.
Thank you, Dick, thank you, Jerry, motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second, Janet.
Janet, all those in favor?
Hi.
I'm not going to ask for the rest, thank you very much, everyone, thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Good night.